Okay, well, call this meeting in order. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Real call, please.
Allen LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Ravitch.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
We need a motion to excuse Emily from the meeting tonight with being she's out of town. Is there a motion for that? Bill moved.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of June 5th would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the joint meeting on June 5th with the library board. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items? I believe you both are here for agenda items?
Yes.
Okay. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, do we have a change?
We have two changes. One to the consent agenda I had sent to council, two budget amendments, one for police department, one for fire department, that I would ask that council add them to consent agenda item U. And then there was just some, mainly some typos in a sentence that I didn't complete on item number six, so I had emailed out that, a revised background brief for item number six, and that's laid on your table, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Question made in support. There is no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We go on to public hearing for consideration of adoption of fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, council is scheduled to hold a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget. The total city budget is 15.2 million, including a 5.3 million general fund budget. City council held three budget workshops in April and May where we reviewed all the various departmental budgets submitted. The budget calls for a tax levy of 15.6637 mils for generally, general operating purposes. This does include a set aside of 1.38 mils for street improvements. Both are the same mils that we levied last year. We do not have a headly rollback this year. It also includes a 1% admin fee for the, to cover the cost of tax collection and an annual fee of $234.56 for the residential trash contract for trash, yard waste, and recycling.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Make the motion to open the public hearing of the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget at 7:05 PM.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any audience that would like to speak to this? Back to the table. Any comments prior to closing? Need a motion to close?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing of the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget at 7:05 and 30 seconds.
Mr. Morgan.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Hearing is closed. We go on to items for consideration, which we have seven this evening. The first one is a consideration of adoption of resolution 2023-4, approval of the 2023-2024 budget. Mr. City Manager?
As council just held the public hearing, everything that I stated for that still stays the same for the budget. I'd just like to thank the council, the city treasure angel, and the different department directors that submitted budgets. It was a very smooth process this year, and I thank everyone that was involved. And before you is the resolution 2023-4, which sets all of the funding levels for the various funds of the city, as well as the trash and the 1% admin fee.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-4, which adopts the city of Richmond fiscal year 2023-24 budget, appropriates unnecessary sums of each fund of the city, adopts 2023 through 2029 capital outlay program, directs a levy of taxes and fees for municipal purposes, and directs preparation of tax roll of collection of taxes.
Support.
Question made in support. Discussion? Like to echo John's statement. Again, yourself and Angels made it very easy for us to go through all this, even though it was three nights of three meetings, it's still, it's, you've got it down to a science to make it very, very easy for us to make our decisions on where the monies should go. So, again, thank you very much. And any other comments, council? Anybody in the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of approval of the 2023-24 fee schedule. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting the fiscal year 2023 through 2024 city fee schedule. Council reviewed all the fees, changes that department directors had when they reviewed their departmental budgets during the budget workshops. There were fee changes in the building department to kind of keep us in line with what the state is charging, also in the recreation department, in particular the community pool, to kind of keep us up with the increasing costs of wages and pool supplies. Then in the sanitary sewer service, there is a readiness to serve charge that will be increased by $3 per quarter. Then the commodity charge on the water department will increase from $4.39 per thousand gallons to $4.52 per thousand gallons.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Richmond's fiscal 2023 to 2024 fee schedule as presented by the city manager.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any discussion on this item? Again, something the council studied during our budget workshops. It seems as though the fees are definitely in line with the increase in costs of doing business, providing water, sewer, and other services in the community. Any audience comment on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Number three, consideration of approving special event requests. Circle Lane neighbors, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from Susan Foster on behalf of the neighbors on Circle, Circle Lane to block off, or Circle Drive, I should say, to block off Circle Drive for their third annual neighborhood party. The party is on Saturday, August 26th, from noon to 4:00 PM, with Sunday, August 27th being the rain date. And so, everything else is the same as the previous two years.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Susan Foster to conduct the Circle Lane Neighborhood Block Party on Circle Lane on Saturday, August 26th, 2023, within clement weather date of Sunday, August 27th, from noon to 4:00 PM, and to allow the closure of Circle Lane from 69874 Circle Lane to the west entrance of Ridge Street.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any discussion on this? It's been an annual. We haven't had any problems with traffic or anything, or neighbors. Okay? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them well. Item number four is consideration of approving special event requests. Mobile food vendors, St. Augustine Parish Festival. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request for mobile food vendors from St. Augustine's Church to have six mobile food vendors for their parish festival. They had discussed this when they came before you, but didn't have all the information put together. Last year, we approved a similar request for up to five food vendors for this event, and so this is to help provide food to the people coming to the parish festival, and someone was here tonight to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event request for mobile food vendors for St. Augustine Church to have six food vendors, mobile food vendors, for the following schedule during the St. Augustine Church and Parish Festival. Friday, August 11th, 4 to 8. Friday, August 11th, again, 4 to 8. That'll be the grilled wrap and the Polish mania. And on Friday, August 11th, 4 to 8, Barbecue Daddy. The Saturday, August 12th, 12 to 8, the Fat Rob's Food Love. Saturday, August 12th, 12 to 8, Grampy's Clamshell. And Saturday, August 12th, 4 to 8, Batter's Up Waffle.
Support.
Question made in support. Would you like to make some comments?
Nope, just thank you guys. Appreciate it.
What are you doing on Sunday? Hang on now, hang on.
Uh, Aket's Chicken Dinner.
Oh, Chicken Dinner.
Traditional, yeah.
Okay, okay. And these people will not be there, then?
The food trucks, no.
Okay.
No, it's solely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Hope you have good weather.
Thank you.
Item number five is so, consideration of special, consideration of special event Commercial House Car Show. It's mouthful. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider approving a special event request from Commercial House, Marianne and Craig LaFleur, to host a classic car show on Sunday, August 6th, 2020, or, I'm sorry. As I mentioned in the email, they are requesting that the date be changed to the day before, Saturday, August 5th. Everything else would remain the same. So, Saturday, August 5th, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The event will actually run from 1:00 to 4:00. And then, the map showing the requested areas of the city parking is included in your background brief. Very similar to last year's event, they would request the city's portion of the Forest Street parking lot. They'll be using their portion of the back parking lot that's under construction right now. And then, the portion of Monroe Street from Forest up to the bank driveway would be used, should they have enough cars that they won't fit in the parking lot. The area is the same as we approved last year. They're hoping that this year, they get enough cars that they may actually use the Monroe Street area. They would also like permission for alcohol in the city parking lot, and they would then have to submit to the state LCC for a temporary license. They do not anticipate having alcohol in the Monroe Street area. And Marianne is here tonight to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve a special event request from Commercial House to host a classic car show on Saturday, August 5th, 2023, from 11:00 AM till 8:00 PM, with the event running from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, utilizing the city's and Commercial House's portion of South Ford Parking Lot and Monroe Street from Forest up to the bank drive-through.
Support.
Question made in support. Marianne, did you have anything to add to this at all? Okay. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, hopefully you have good weather. Item number six, consideration of awarding liability insurance. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the liability insurance proposal from the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $97,953. The city clerk and city manager met with our current insurance agent from the Decor Agency to review the city's liability insurance proposal, and at that time, were informed of a substantial increase. Due to the timing, it kind of put us in a kind of quick reaction to try and get a proposal put together for your consideration tonight. Due to that timing, because anytime you try and get a proposal from a new company, there's a lot of questions and information that you have to put together for that new company. And so, due to that, I had reached out to two of the larger providers of municipal insurance in this area, Nicklin Saf and then MML Liability Pool, which only handles municipal clients. Nicklin Saf did inform us that it just, the timeline was too short for their underwriters to be able to provide a quote, but MML did work with us. Heather and the department directors put together information, and they were able to provide a quote that we've gone through and feel that the coverage is comparable to what we currently have. Had a substantial savings. We currently have our workers' comp coverage through MML, probably in the late 90s, early 2000s. We had switched from MML to our current carrier. Now, it looks like, at least our recommendation is to switch back. And the MML Liability Pool was formed in 82, 1982, as the private market was having difficulty kind of accurately pricing in the minds of municipalities municipal insurance. And so, it's made up of other member municipalities that understand what our kind of unique needs are in the insurance market, and so, they have quite a substantial amount of the cities and villages in Michigan go through that.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the liability insurance proposal from the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $97,953.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any discussion on this? And we've talked about this, but I forgot to bring up, would we consider Nicklin Saf in the future?
Yeah, yeah.
So, would that be something we can let them know, hey?
Yeah, next time we go out, yeah, we, it's probably been longer than I think, but within the last like eight years, I think, we went out, got quotes from Nicklin Saf and our current agent, our current agent had dropped their price when we went out for goods.
Right, yeah.
I'm often in talks with Nicklin Saf, so that was my intent for next year, was to go out and include them.
Good.
Just unfortunate, and we did include them this time, unfortunately, timing wise, they couldn't help participating.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Any audience participation on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven, consideration of board appointments.
There's three board appointments. We have received applications back for reappointment for Gail O'Neill from the library board, Rich Weiner from Planning Commission, and Rob Reindell from Tifa.
Thank you. We would first ask for reappointment of Gail O'Neill to library board. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Gail O'Neill to library board for two-year term with the expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on that? Good member of the library board, always attending all of our meetings that we've had and everything. Been a good asset there. Comments from the public at all? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank her. Also, I'd like you to confirm my reappointment of Rich Weiner to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2026. Is there support?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Robert Weiner to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with expiration date of June 30th, 2026.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on that? Rich is invaluable on the planning commission, I think. He has a background in architectural drawing, and sometimes he can, if you sit next to him, he can draw what we're thinking. But also, he's very good. He's a business owner and has been on there for a while now, and has done a great job. Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank him. Also, I'd like you, with hesitation, to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rob Reindell to Tifa. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rob Reindell to the Tax Increment Finance Authority for a four-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2027.
Support.
Question made in support. Any comments?
Pleasure to serve.
Yeah, I know, you would say something like that. No, you've done a good job on Tifa. We appreciate you signing back up again, Rob. Very good. Any audience participation on this item? You can take a crack at them if you want, either one of you. We've already passed your motions.
Easy.
Yeah. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, Rob. And where are we at here? That was the final items for consideration. Move on, miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
Received a phone call just prior to the meeting, the, they were turning the water back on after replacing the water main on Main Street through Division Road. Tonight, they'll be bringing the trench up level with the road with stone. They're gonna let traffic run on that tomorrow, and then Wednesday, go in and put the concrete that's required underneath the asphalt as the state trunk line, there's asphalt underneath the pavement on Main Street. So, on Wednesday, they'll install the concrete. They'll have to plate the trench to allow for traffic to run over it without, while the concrete cures, and then probably Friday, patch in with asphalt. The parking lot paving should begin tomorrow with the base course, like on what, I didn't get it typed up at the intersection, so didn't get a chance to look at that today, but they should be scheduled for paving tomorrow on the parking lot. And then, the Stone Street project, they'll start pavement removals tomorrow. They'll, they're gonna be doing that, not by milling, but by taking it up manually. They'll start the first block pretty much there from Division Road up to Water Street, probably tomorrow, but working their way north the rest of the week. And, oh, I have submitted to the Macomb County to be reappointed to the Regional Transit Authority about, well, two years now. I had informed council that I'd been asked by the county to serve on that board, and the term that I was filling out ended this month, or in, I'm sorry, July, so my appointment would begin August 1st for another three-year term, if they approve it.
Okay. Okay. We move on to council comments. Dennis?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Ron?
All set.
Michael?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, let me go to the calendar here. We got a few. Saturday is our first movie in the park on Saturday, June 24th, at dusk, and that's at BB Street Park. The movie is Family Camp. We have a book folding workshop on June 20th, that's tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library Meeting Room. Any questions on that? Summer youth volleyball camp starts this, started today, June 19th, for 3rd through 6th grade, and Monday, July 31st, will be 7th through 8th grade. So, that again, would be a question for Parks and Rec if you have any, 727-3064. Senior pool party is this Saturday, Saturday, June 24th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That is a, there is a fee, and again, any questions, Parks and Recreation, 727-3064. The Richmond Police Officers Association Golf Cart Raffle is ongoing. It's $10 per ticket, and there's only 1,500 tickets sold on a 2023 Icon Golf Cart. The drawing would be held on August 6th at 2:30 PM at BB Street Park. You need not be present to win, and that is the same day we have the golf cart rally over there and cook out pig roast, I believe. Is it chief, it's still pig roast? Okay. So, that is on August 6th, but tickets are available at the police department. What do we got here? First day of summer on the 21st here. The REGS Historical Society Heritage Festival and Fiber Festival will be held this Saturday and Sunday, and Sunday is also Log Cabin Day. We have a Tifa meeting on the 28th at 7:00 o'clock right here at City Hall. That takes us into July 1st. The 4th lands on Tuesday. The city council normally would have met on the 3rd, but many of us will be not available, and so, we are, yeah, we're gonna have the regular city council meeting on Thursday at 7:00 o'clock on July 6th. Cable Commission will be meeting on the 11th at 6:30. The Park and Rec Board will meet at, on the 11th at 7:00. Planning Commission, that's still up in the air, whether or not we have anything on the agenda?
Correct, but I think we'll probably do some training.
Okay. So, on the 13th at 7:00?
Yeah.
And then, city council, remember, will have a workshop on the 17th at 5:30, and regular council meeting at 7:00 on the 17th. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar?
Just a reminder that both Monday, the 3rd, and Tuesday, the 4th, city offices are closed.
Yeah, okay. All righty. If there's nothing else, we have a closed session. We need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement as requested by administration.
Support.
Question made in support. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Ravitch?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yep.
Ricks?
Yep.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yep.
Motion passes, we will go into closed session. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene into open session.
I make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? We're back in open session. Motion passes. Okay, under other business, item number one is consideration of approving tentative agreement dated 6/15/23 with the POLC Command. Mr. City Manager?
As we discussed, we have come to a tentative agreement with the command patrol, or command bargaining unit.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the tentative agreement dated June 15, 2023, with the Police Officers Labor Council, City of Richmond Command.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on this item? I think administration and police officers, police officers, command for coming to agreement on a fair negotiation here and a good contract. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two under other businesses is the MERS Amendment. Mr. City Manager?
As we've discussed, we had a long discussion with patrol. We've also had the discussion with command and dispatch on our current MERS contribution levels, and we have come to an agreement on that. So, MERS has provided us with an amendment to our defined benefit plan adoption agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the existing defined benefit plan adoption agreement with effective date 7/1/2023, and remove the 12-month probationary period and authorize city manager to sign the amendment agreement.
Support.
Question made in support. Any discussion on this item? Which has been a lot of discussion over the last few months on this retirement plan. I think we came to a good, good point here. Any other discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move to adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made and supported, there is no discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Thank you for being with us.